Council Button.
Present.
President, Council Cagil.
Present.
President, Council Capano.
Present.
President, Council Fortucci.
Present.
President, Council Prent.
Present.
President, Council Seah.
Present.
President, Council Ford.
Present.
President, Council Ozy. President, Council Lynette.
Present.
President, Council Phelan.
Present.
President, Council Trahan.
Present.
President, 11th President.
Can we all please rise from all the silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you have a motion to accept an amendment of the January 10th meeting for your second discussion? All those in favor? I am opposed. Motion carries. Communications.
We have a communication from Richard Fortucci, Treasurer/CFO of the Council pursuant to the Acts of 1985, Chapter 8, and pursuant to Attorney V. Allen's letter of January 9, 2012. I present to the Lynn City Council, Steven Spencer, as my appointee to the position of City Controller. Mr. Spencer possesses relevant experience in accounting and reporting, grant administration, and supervision of accounting staff. He also possesses a relevant knowledge of automated systems and the training of staff for the same sincerely, Richard J. Fortucci.
Pleased recognizing any motion on this particular issue, what we're going to do is we're going to have the current Chief Financial Officer come up, explain what the process was, open the floor to questions of the Chief Financial Officer, and then bring the candidate up and open the floor to questions to the candidate. Mr. Fortucci.
What do you think? As you know, we've been in the process of the past five months of searching for a Controller. And I just want to chronologically go through the steps that have been taken in that time and just to basically give you some outline anyway as to how we arrived at the candidate at this time for your review and hopefully confirmation. Back in September, September 6th, actually, we had first posted this position. We posted it in several different areas, obviously, the I- local paper, the Boston Globe, and also it was posted online. And from that, we actually had a candidate from Downwater Cave as well as a candidate from New York as well that responded to the ads. We let a two-week, two-and-a-half week period go by. September 23rd was the deadline for anyone interested in the position to submit a resume. And after getting the resumes in, what I did is I took and made copies, distributed to then-Council Crowley and to Mayor Kennedy, and asked everybody to go through them and, you know, get some feedback as to what candidates we'd like to interview. In addition to that, and my dad, I also sent a copy off to our auditor as well. Did not want him directly involved in the process, but certainly wanted his feedback on some of the candidates that did submit resumes for our position. The, from the, from the review process, we actually, we chose five candidates. And at that point, the process was somewhat on hold. They actually pushed this whole thing out to GNI, trying to get through the holiday season because it took us from October a while to the round of Thanksgiving holidays. So, so we, we put this out just to get by the holiday season, so to speak. In the interim, Council Crowley had asked that I take the five resumes that were chosen by the three of us and give them a call and basically conduct a phone interview or a screen, which I did. And from that screen, I put together a matrix, the responses that I got from the respective candidates at that time, and again, distributed those to both Council Crowley and Mayor Kennedy. We then moved on from there and scheduled first by the January as a generator, we had introduced the five candidates. And speaking strictly for myself, I had my feedback from my interpretation. I also had questioning going on at that time, but more importantly, you know, I can't come up with every question. I can't think of everything. So, it was, you know, I looked forward to others questioning these candidates, which then allowed me to take further notes, you know, because again, they can have that perspective that I'm, that I'm not coming from. So, it was good that I could listen to the responses from their questions. I took further notes on these candidates as well. At that point, it was talk of another round of interviews, which I initially entertained, but then decided against. And at this point, I've already been on the phone with these people, reviewed, gone through quite a bit. We've had five months elapsed, and we've been that long without a Controller. And I think, you know, based on the input I got directly from these people, based on the input, the questions of others that I had, I would say, actually, Council Lynette saw my meticulous notes that I had put next to each and every resume, every candidate, and all the questions that were asked on there. And, you know, there was enough information there to then make a decision to, to send someone here to the Council. We already reviewed confirmation and asked for listening.
Council Trahan.
Thank you, Council. Your, um, Mr. Fortucci, now, who was, who was like there during?
It was myself, it was Council Crowley, it was Mayor Kennedy, and actually we had a lady from the Leep Controller's office, Mayor Etienne, which was good because she was, she had some very relevant questions regarding systems, of which Mr. Spencer has got a vast knowledge of and actually is involved in employee training where he's currently working as, he's Deputy Director of Accounting, but he'll tell you that he's now the interim acting director because his boss is retired and they've run enough of him to move him into that position. And so, I guess that's what we did.
Council Lynette.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity for, you know, to be in the office.
You are.
Now, I think, I know it's a very difficult decision for you to select the right candidates because our client was fine candidate and you were very, very experienced and also you're a thought officer, I really appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Council Cagil, maybe, Mr. President. Mr. Fortucci. My understanding that, that through reading correspondence with a lot of, that you are the pointing figure for a number of positions in the City of Lynn.
Correct.
And one of those is the Controller's position.
Correct.
And that is by virtue of the 1985 law that essentially was put in place to protect the City of Lynn from some kind of front edge of the stress in the eighties.
Correct.
And you were clearly involved from the beginning of this process.
Yes.
And I see our role as a Council as a confirming body. So, my question used is pretty point-blank. In your professional opinion, do you stand by the fact that you are telling us today that this candidate, Steven Spencer, was the best candidate? And that you feel comfortable with him being the next Controller?
I do. And let me just clarify something for you, that we had good candidates. Two of them, I felt, really didn't belong here, you know, people from all parts of the state and one from New York. They possessed very good qualifications, but not specific to the job. In the remaining, you know, persons that we looked at, you, you look and you say, who has the best combination of qualifications? As one may be stronger in one area than the other, weaker in another may be stronger in a kind, weak in systems or vice versa. So, you're really looking for that overall, you know, well-roundedness in a person, you know, to have a combination of qualifications, not necessarily just one strong, you know, point to their, to their resume or to their work experience. And I think what we look at here is we have a best combination of both accounting and, and systems experience for what we do because if anyone working out there today knows little, if anything ever gets done by passing the paper anymore, it's all in some automated system. And to have the knowledge of, of systems that are very similar to what we use, ways have would be also on the decision if we were to choose. And, you know, that's, that's all part of the learning process coming in. And I think we could all agree that when we go to a new position, any of us, regardless of whether you have 10, 20, 30 years' experience, you're still going in and there's a learning curve, regardless if you are the CEO or going in as a manager, supervisor, or are a applying employee, for example, we all have a learning curve to go through. And I think in, in our case, in any case today, knowledge of systems in addition to knowledge of the subject matter itself, a combination of the two are very important. And that's what I see here, so we've got a combination of the two.
And Mr. Fortucci, you are the current CFO for the City of Lynn, correct?
Correct.
And that's a five-year appointment made by the mayor, correct?
Correct.
Rumor has it, next year, your appointment's up.
Not a rumor, it's a fact.
I only bring this up because clearly, from reading some things in the local newspaper, there may be disagreements as to this appointment with the CEO of the city. And what kind of crystallized this appointment for me was the fact that your appointment's up next year, you're making an adverse decision to the person who will be ultimately deciding whether or not you are the CEO of next year. But you're still standing, you're still standing by your belief that Mr. Spencer is the best qualified candidate?
Yes.
With all that riding on?
All that riding on, yeah. There's nothing I can do about that, Council Cagil. All right? If it has an adverse effect on me, that's just something I'm going to have to live with, but I think in my heart that this is the correct move for the City of Lynn.
That's the answer. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fortucci? Council Calucci.
Mr. Fortucci, if you appoint him, and he doesn't pan out, you have the ability to fire him, like, the principle?
There is a six-month term period. I think we're all subject to that when we get here. I think we're also subjected to a three-year period where, you know, we're non-tenured. So, yeah, there's, there's risk out there for us in bringing in somebody, but conversely, there's also risk for the employee coming in. So, I think there's incentive by all, all bodies to make sure we've got somebody that's good. Certainly, that weighed heavily on my decision. I, I'm not going to bring someone in that I think can handle this because it's going to come back and impact me.
Council Lynette.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's going to be a contract of a certain care that he's taking job, just in case there's a, a job opportunity to come up better than this and leave, so there's going to be any contract?
We, we have no such arrangement, Council. If someone were in the job and they chose to leave or go elsewhere, to my knowledge, there are no safeguards in place to prevent that person from leaving. There would be a breach of that, that's my understanding.
Council Seah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listening to everyone here tonight, Council Seah, we have a couple of concerns with the whole process. And, I mean, everybody here knows that there were four people involved in the interviews on the current position. Council Crowley, the mayor, yourself, Mayor Etienne.
Yes.
And everybody came down and took candidates through that interview process?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, he came down, Mr. Spencer, the other candidate, and, I mean, I, um, always thought he did you your, really great, I still do, I've always been a supporter of yours. And I think, you know, when you make a decision, you make it for the good of the city, and I believe that. You know, I have been interviewing Mr. Spencer on the interview committee. I'm very comfortable with the choice.
Thank you.
But I just, you know, I just keep going back to whose appointment it is. And we all know who's in blame for this. You know, you know, a little angry at the newspaper and anybody who's trying to derail this whole process. And some of the comments that have been made and some of the last-minute moments, final hour, public paper, the last minute, without communicating to the Council. Our other Councilors communicate, that's what this is all about, communication. And I think there's been a lot of communication down here. You know, I'm very comfortable with your trust, and I just wanted to say that.
Any other questions from the Council? For Mr. Fortucci, Council Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Now, this isn't so much to Mr. Fortucci, but I'd just like to continue on what Council Seah said. I think that, that Mr. Fortucci, you know, was nice enough, he didn't really have to, but, you know, I think really we should change it going forward. You know, he invited the mayor, she did participate in this. Do I think that the way it's structured now, as Council Cagil said, I think maybe, you know, it's back from 1985, maybe it's something that we should maybe go back and look at? I think maybe if I was the mayor today, maybe I would want to be part of that, you know, it's kind of an important decision, maybe the mayor should be maybe part of it also included, but, you know, but we did include her. And, you know, for the record, I'd just like to say, like, we had an interview committee that meeting that night, the mayor was, you know, she's always invited, anytime she wants to come to any of our committee meetings, I know I speak for all my colleagues if I don't speak up, but, you know, she's always invited. We're glad to have her there, you know, she's a love of knowledge, she's very intelligent, she brings a lot to the table. And I think that, you know, anytime she wants to come and help, you know, we're certainly, we're certainly there if she can pick up the phone. You know, I think a lot of what we're doing right now is we're like going through the paper with the back and forth, you know? And I think as a Council, I think we all, I think we all get along, and I think, you know, we do get along with the mayor, but I think she needs to kind of like, you know, you know, just kind of include us more, you know? I think that, you know, this run and back and forth to the paper and, you know, I think that we all just need to like sit down one-on-one and, you know, get together with the mayor and, you know, that we're there for her and, you know, she's there for us. And I think, you know, the city will move forward, you know, if you don't want to stand still, you want to move forward. So, I think if we're all working together, I think that we can, you know, do it better. So, I just like to, I would say she's always invited and glad to have her here, so, thank you.
Council Seah.
Thank you, uh, I want to take away from this small bus, I agree with what Council Trahan said, it's best for the city if we all communicate with each other in the mayor's office, Councils. Everyone, you know, doesn't serve anyone to not keep it. And that's kind of what happened here, is the laws don't, we're not running free reads, we don't know what someone else is thinking. So, the mayor or any Councilor has any thoughts, disagreements, any, I just wish they'd pick up the phone, you know, to, you know, someone to talk to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fortucci? Thank you, Mr. Fortucci.
Thank you.
Council Button.
Yes, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask the lawyers.
Yes, before we bring up Mr. Spencer, Attorney Vice Allen, or Attorney Lamont?
Um, my question, one of my questions is, John Pace, does he have, still have a suit or something going on against the city?
There is still a ongoing lawsuit by Mr. Pace against the City of Lynn.
Right. And my next question would be, what opinion, when's this lawsuit? You know, what's going to happen? Is Spencer going to be leaving his job, or, you know?
Typically, if he is successful in the lawsuit, he would be avoiding monetary damages, which would be the salary that he would have made, having not been, very rare circumstances, with a court order, an employee back to work.
Okay, the reason I ask that question because I hate to see Spencer go into that job and then, you know, now he went to suit, and, and, you know, now he has two lawsuits, everyone's got to go, so, thank you.
Um, Mr. Trahan, would you stay for a moment?
Just a, a complaint and a clarification. Because I was under the impression that the suit involving Mr. Pace was for monetary damages and not for reading the statement into his own position. Is that correct?
One of his prayers for relief in his complaint is, is, he is seeking reinstated. But the vast majority of the backwoods avoid monetary damages, that would make it old, you know, the rule he would have written, that salary, that, that would be the most likely result that he, he does to that.
And Council Cagil.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, did you have a?
No, I was going to say Attorney Lamont has stayed.
Oh.
Council Cagil.
No, I have a question, sir.
Mr. Lamont, we talked about compensation. How do we determine what the compensation is for a Controller?
That is established via ordinance and all the public heads, entitled benefits of Level 3147, educational incentive benefits, insurance, commission benefits, but that would be the other, how is salary would be determined?
Okay, so I have, I have an ordinance here from 1994. And oddly enough, some of the Councilors are still here. It says here that a Controller is a Level 1 employee, but it says that the entry level is like $48,000. So, do we take that base and then do we work the candidate's years of experience or education? How do we get to the NER? Or do we base it off with the last one, walking out the door?
My understanding is that we've got $41,000 salary every day raised that 3147 has received since 1994, three percent raise in 1995, $41,000 to go up. At some point in time, both 3147 received educational incentive benefits. Education, but he would be entitled to compensation based on the level of education he has for the 3147 contract. Prior control salary would be pretty good indication of what those raises are, have to compare to the two educations, to get an exact number.
So, the salary could deviate from what the last Controller received going out the door?
So, absolutely certainly in situations where the education level is on the side.
Now, as Council, we just settled, a new settlement?
The, the ordinance was, the City Council always has the ability to adjust, adjust the public head salaries.
So, we didn't agree with where someone was today based on the 1994 ordinance? We could just reestablish salaries and then going forward, whatever benefits the local would get, we'd apply to that base salary?
The ordinance, public heads are entitled to benefits of Level 3147 in this town. This is determined by the president.
But it would, it would go back to the, is that correct? We, 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 we knew the ordinance from 1994 and it went from 2012. And the benefits would be based on the base salary we set in 2012.
Correct. Based on the decisions Council makes for the city roadhead salary?
Going forward, new decisions, obviously would apply to people who recover from the ordinance.
With reliance, it would be who would want to.
You don't have any idea what the salary is going to be in this position? Sorry? You don't have any idea what the, what the salary in this position is going to be?
I do know.
I do believe, if I may, from the chair, that Mr. Fortucci would not have that information. Mr. Fortucci, would you mind coming to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I don't have the pennies with me, but the, as Attorney Lamont stated, that there have been raises over the years, so that, that figure currently stands at $77,000 and change, $77,100 or something like that. I don't have the exact number here. Given, and that's a non-tenure, by the way, there's something still to be worked out, I think, with a lot of, but my understanding is that the Council is a lot of years back to where a lot of people had started at the tenure rate that the public heads coming in would start at the non-tenure rate. So, I'm giving you the non-tenure rate. And given his educational level with 20% on that, which would bring it to approximately $92,000. But in addition to that, because he has state service, at that time, will transfer back to the city to return the benefits in terms of vacation time and longevity.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions for Mr. Fortucci or Mr. Lamont? Thank you. Mr. Spencer, if you would mind. Mr. Spencer, I'm going to give you the option, if you'd like to say a few words before I open the, the floor to Councils for questions, unless you'd like to go right into questions, your choice.
Just go right into questions.
Questions for Mr. Spencer. Council Lynette.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Spencer, again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to leave you over the weekend.
It's my pleasure.
And to get to know you more, personally and also professionally, so you were present a lot. And my question is, I just want to, what are specific things that you are looking to receive or could do to improve?
Well, I, first off, you know, I just, I'm a communicator, just like to say that first off. Two things by actions, I'm a listener, I'm an open person, just hardworking, I'm a vested member of this community, born and raised in the city, kids go to school in the city, have a house in the city. And, you know, I just want to bring up my work, I just want to bring my qualities to, you know, to, to this job, which is hard work, you know, fiscal management. And, you know, that's, that's it. I mean, it's hard work. I mean, I, I could go on and on, but as our conversation was where the other day, you know, I think you know where I stand.
You're going to be facing the city as well, aren't you?
Yes, oh, yes, yes. Yes, I want to get back to the city I live.
Any questions? Council Cagil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Spencer, what are some of the things you do currently in your position?
Let me, let me give you a brief overview of what I do now. As Rich said, I'm the interim Director of Accounting and Operations for the Department of Health. It's a $650 million state agency. Pretty much run soup to nuts accounting and operations, which is procurement, purchasing, and federal grant management, all of the above, fixed asset submissions, controls. My day is not the same. I'm in meetings, doing things, talking to vendors who aren't able to make payroll. It's a pretty whirlwind position that I have. It's a challenging position, it's a position I really enjoy. However, this opportunity came up, I said I really couldn't pass it up. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity of work in the city that I've opened, and I relish in that opportunity. But to further your question, Dan, basically, state government work, transparency, work, 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 open checkbook, as you probably know. But, you know, it's a, when, yeah, one thing I do, I do a number of things every day that changes the outcome of the agency that I work for. And, you know, it's just pretty much basically in a nutshell, re-managing, handling $650 million on the, on the department level.
Anything else, Council Cagil? Just a few more. With the Department of Mental Health?
Yes.
Do you have experience sitting on audit committees? And let me tell you why, we, we have an audit committee that was formed last term by former Council Walt Riley. I'd like to see that continue on. However, for most people on the committee, it was a brainy process, and a lot of them, a lot of us are still learning. You have experience in sitting on audit committees, and would you be willing to, to come on board, I guess?
Well, yes, well, the Department of Mental Health is subject to single-state audit on an hourly basis, so, auditers could walk in the, the door at any minute, and I would be the point person for the Department of Mental Health if they did show. for the Department of Mental Health if they did show up, which they have in the past. I've sat in many audits with the Department, with the single-state audit, be it the OSD, Office of Service Delivery, as well as the Audit Office. So I've been on the other side of audits, those guys coming in, asking questions, asking pulling payments, getting documentation for them. So to answer your question, yes, I'm well aware of audits, I've sat in audits, I've written audit, audit findings, they've written audit findings on us too. So to answer that question, yes. And I would be to further that question, I'd be more than willing to share, you know, engage in that audit process here for the city.
And at the end of that audit is a management letter?
Yes.
And I think over the years, it looks as though the city has been like to achieve all the goals of the management, but the management letter has suggested. Do you have any thoughts on how you would tackle that issue?
I was just going to use that same word. I would tackle, as we say in state government, the low fruit. I would, you know, address the things that could be addressed simply, whether it should be communication, cross-training staff, transparency, to share knowledge from one person who's been here maybe 20 years to one person who's been here one week. That's part of my management style as well. Just trying to be open and talking to everybody, you know, seeing what people's own, so people aren't in silos, you know, I would like to have an educated cross-training staff, you know? And that, but to address the management letter, just pick one off at a time, you know, low fruit first and then hopefully, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Any additional questions for the council? Thank you, Mr. Spencer. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Calucci?
Settle the paper, hopefully you can do the shot motion to approve.
Second. Okay, take that phone motion to confirm the appointment of Mr. Spencer as sent up by the CFO, seconded by Counselor Capano. Roll call, please.
Counselor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Floyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Spencer.